We'll go ahead and call tonight's regular city council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, we've got Associate Pastor Ken Manning of the Davis Memorial Christian Church.
Taterville Christian Church.
I'm sorry, Taterville Christian Church.
May our heads be prayer, please? Heavenly Father, what a privilege it is to live in a country where we can serve and worship you freely, and where we can choose, Lord, to be able to serve others as well. We thank you for these men and women who have chosen to serve others with their time and to dedicate themselves, Father, to make our community a better place to live. And so we thank you for them, and we ask that you will give them wisdom and guidance here tonight as they make decisions that will affect all of us. And we pray that these decisions will also honor you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I think we should get all the serfs we can out of our elected officials. So Terry France and John Lawrence, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sean Burdell.
Here.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Rob Heatherling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coontz.
Here.
John Lawrence.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
Okay, we have seven aldermen present and one absent. First item we have on the agenda is a motion to utilize the omnibus vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings and public hearings listed on tonight's agenda under the title Omnibus Vote Destination. Jones and second by alderman Burdell, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, the minutes we'll be approving will be the minutes of the special city council meeting of April 15th, 2013, minutes of the public hearing held April 15th, 2013, minutes of the regular meeting held April 15th, 2013, and minutes of the special city council meeting held April 29th, 2013. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Alderman Burdell?
Second.
Second by alderman Heatherling, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have a motion to approve and ratify payment of bills in the amount of $350,714.35. I'll make that motion, Your Honor, with some comments. Okay. Second by alderman Walters, go ahead with your comments, alderman Lawrence.
Total we're approving tonight is a multiple order.
Yes. Okay.
Total of $350,714 for the first cycle of paying bills in the month of May. My usual big-ticket items are as follows. Our bills include the employee insurance payments, which cover our Blue Cross medical, dental, vision, and group life for $105,649. Page 17 on your list has the insurance fund, which is spending $62,873 on our property and liability, our workmanship comp, an additional aviation, airport package policy, and bonding for our mayor for the forthcoming year. A total of $62,873. First of the month, or at least once a month, we incur our direct energy electric bill, which this month is $6,807. And we also have the delivery charges from Ameren and Shelby Electric, $3,227. We're reimbursing all these under a sales tax reimbursement agreement, second year, for an increase in sales tax, and that reimbursement is $7,385. I think it's interesting to note that this year, the 7% merchandise sales and the 1% food sales were exactly 50/50, as opposed to last year. The first year, it ran over like 51.4% on the merchandise sales versus the 1%. Sales were up, and that basically generates a $7,385 rebate. Page 10 of the safety committee funds, we're spending $12,632 on the grant money we get for the safety spending. And our street fund is paying $8,800 to Bodine Electric for repair of the subway and pressure stoplights. And under our professional fees, we're paying our city engineer a total of $16,312, most of which is already on hand in our sewer project fund for being reimbursed for the Lake Shore Bridge redo. So that those big-ticket items amount to $127,000 out of the $350,000. And to get it down to $101,000 routine budget expenditures, I have added $26,000 worth of water department chemicals that are really routine, but that gets me down to a range I don't have to explain anything.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions or comments? Alderman Burdell?
On page three, Your Honor, and a paper this by Mr. Lawrence, we weren't quite sure. Under spurling title on that page there, there are several entries and expenses. Can anybody clarify what exactly those were for? Is there...
Those are the upcoming annexations we're going to be doing.
Okay, so the difference in prices is what? Could you tell me that, Madam Clerk?
I guess it was depending on the work that they did and how long it took them.
Okay.
Some took a little bit longer than others.
And I appreciate that. And it's just an indication that as we continue to pursue annexation of properties, there are costs that are hidden behind the curtain that we have to be well aware of. And these are those costs, some of those costs, so I just wanted to bring it to you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have a motion to approve abstract of votes from the April 9th, 2013 election. Second by alderman Jones, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
John Lawrence?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, usually at the city's first regular meeting in its fiscal year, we traditionally, it's traditionally a short one, because, you know, the primary task is say goodbye and thanks to the elected officials that are leaving their positions and hello to those who are going to be replacing them. So we're going to move forward with that, and I'd like to ask Mr. Lawrence, alderman Lawrence, if he would be so kind as to meet me out front here. I'd like to make a little presentation to you. You know, for the last four years, John has captained the city's financial ship, helping us avoid potential hazards and helping us to plot the safe course as we move forward as a city. John, we're going to miss your stewardship and your guidance. You have been a dedicated servant to the citizens of the city. And so on behalf of the city of Taterville, its employees, and its fellow aldermen, I would like to present you with this plaque in honor of your years of service. We have a plaque here that reads, "The City of Taterville presents this plaque to John Lawrence in recognition for the four years of dedicated service as an alderman. His financial guidance has benefited all the citizens of Taterville." John, we thank you. I'd like to ask Terry France, please step forward. Terry has served the city as the city treasurer for 12 years. Now, prior to being elected to city treasurer, she worked for over 20 years at the Christian County Courthouse, not the one with the pigs and the even the colonel. For well over three decades, she has served the residents of Christian County and citizens of Taterville. She has always performed her duties in a professional manner. As a small token of gratitude for your years of service, we would like to present you with this plaque. The plaque says, "The City of Taterville presents this plaque to Terry France, who has unselfishly served the city and its residents for 12 years as city treasurer. Her dedication, work ethic, integrity, and compassion should serve as a sterling example." And Terry, there's one more thing we'd like to do for you. You can sit down.
Oh, it's something. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Now, a cup of coffee.
Oh, no.
Sit right down now.
Okay.
You know, Jesus turned, I believe, water into wine. If I'm almost American, turn coffee into water, but that's before you... You know, I love water. You're a water god. We suffer from thirst, and water is a good solution.
Like Clorox.
When we make mistakes, water can worsen away. When we are tired, it can revitalize us. Now, in today's world, we often take water for granted. But the day without it certainly makes us realize how valuable it really is. Well, you know, Terry France is a lot like water. When we thirst for knowledge, she provides it. When we make mistakes, she fixes them. When we feel the day has beaten us down, she shares that beautiful smile of hers and we somehow revive life. Like the water, we sometimes take her for granted. Just like water, the day without her makes us realize just how valuable it is. Terry, we're going to miss you. And because I've now made a very clear decision, because you're leaving, we all will be suffering. I'm asking that you don't go too far, stay away too long.
John, John, one.
One at a time, John. John kind of stole the show, didn't he? He did alright.
I feel like a bachelor. Yes, I will accept this rose.
Where's the superintendent's?
Thank you.
We're not done. He forgot his phone. None of this was choreographed before. He's got it. Will you accept my rose? Jackie's all about the details.
That's why you'll be just fine.
Terry, this final rose represents you, the fact that you will always be in the center of our hearts and minds.
That's just gorgeous. Thank you all very much.
Now, we're going to take about a two or three-minute recess. We'll come back with the new members in place.
Mr. Mayor, I was emailed today from the city clerk's office, and she said that there was one item of business that wasn't on our agenda tonight, but it really needed to be done. So if everybody would stand up in honor of the mayor's 75th birthday, I believe it's 56?
Somewhere around.
Somewhere around there, somewhere between 56 and 75. I've been asked to lead everyone in a chorus of happy birthday.
Oh, this ought to be good.
So with that? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you all. Thank you, thank you. Now, a couple-minute recess. We'll start with the swearing-in ceremony for the elected officials. And I guess I'm first on the list, so...
You'll repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution...
...of the United States...
Of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office of mayor...
The duties of the office of mayor...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office of city clerk...
The duties of the office of the city clerk...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Next, we have the newly-elected city treasurer, Jackie Nation.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office of city treasurer...
The duties of the office of city treasurer...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Next, we have Ward One Alderman Larry Budd.
If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office of Alderman Ward One...
The duties of the office of Alderman Ward One...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Next, we have Ward Two Alderman Rob Heatherley.
I'll need your help.
I understand.
If you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office of Alderman Ward Two...
The duties of the office of Alderman Ward Two...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Okay, Ward Three Alderman Ernie Dorchinez cannot be here tonight. He's playing, he's got grandpa duties that I think took precedence over this. So I'd ask Ward Four Alderman Sean Burdell, please come forward.
Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office of Alderman Ward Four...
The duties of Alderman Ward Four...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Well, we'll go ahead and take the motion first. All right, let's have a roll call here.
Larry Budd?
Here.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez? Rob Heatherling?
Here.
Bruce Jones?
Here.
Ray Coontz?
Here.
Martin Voda?
Here.
Earl Walters?
Here.
Seven aldermen present, one absent. I believe I handed out a memo to all the aldermen as far as the appointment of superintendents. And what I'd like to do is I'd entertain a motion to approve the following appointments. For Street and Sewer Superintendent Dick Wiseman, for Lake Superintendent Alan Jackson, Police Chief David Herb Street, Cemetery Sexton Airport Manager Bill Newberry, Health and Building Officer George Calvert, Water Department Superintendent Dave Spiegel, and Human Resource Manager Cindy Brown. Okay. Walters, second by alderman Burdell, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Budd?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. Now, I would ask all those people named to please come forward and then ask the judge to swear them in. Everyone... Please use your own name, pay attention to the judge.
When I say duties of the office, I'll just, you guys will say whatever it is, okay? So if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office of...
The duties of the office of Alderman Ward Two...
The duties of the office of Alderman Ward Two... ...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I'll tell you, they all do a great job for us, and we're very lucky to have them.
Don't see George dress that very often.
All right, the next thing we have here is, first of all, I want to start off by extending my sincere thanks to David Fines for his years of service as city attorney. Now, while I've chosen not to reappoint him, I want to make it clear that my decision is not due to a performance issue, but rather my feeling that a style change might be beneficial. In my opinion, it's somewhat like a coach replacing a player during a basketball game. Both players have their own sets of talents and skills and help the team in different ways. Rocky Romano is a well-respected local attorney who has considerable experience in municipal law. He has previous experience as a city attorney, and I believe he will do a great job in that role once again. With that said, I would like to appoint Rocky Romano as the city attorney, and I would entertain a motion to approve my appointment. Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Coontz, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Budd?
Yes.
And Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. So Mr. Romano, if you'd come forward, we'd have the judge do the honors. So where are you, man?
You raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear...
I do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...the duties of the office of city attorney...
The duties of the office of city attorney...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
Okay, next, we have the appointment of a city engineer. Joe Green has done some great work for the city of Taterville for many, many years, and I would like it to be at least four more. So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to approve my appointment of Joe Green, the city engineer. Okay. Alderman Walters, second by Alderman Heatherley? Okay. Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Ray Coontz?
Yes.
Martin Voda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Budd?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Rob Heatherling?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. George, I mean Joe. I just gave you a promotion there.
All right, Joe, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office of city engineer.
The duties of the office of city engineer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Judge Paisley, we certainly want to thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to help us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the only other thing we have is, uh, committee assignments, and I handed out a sheet of the committee assignments to each of the aldermen, and I will be more than happy to share those with the, the press.
I'm gonna share one, Teresa.
Okay, I think we're to the point where we can say, per Public Act ninety-six dash fourteen seventy-three, this portion of the city council meeting is reserved for any city resident wishing to address the council on issues that are relevant to the council. Would anyone like to address the council? Yes, sir.
I, I just want to say... That speaking as a proud dad to the city, wow, what a joy to hear of me electing my daughter as treasurer for the city of Taterville, and she did not take that oath lightly. And I'm sure that over this next four years, you will see that the type of person that she is and the type of, of leadership that Terry France showed to her. And I'm just thankful for the city for doing that.
Well, thank you for that, and you have a right to be a proud father, let me tell you. Anyone else? Yes, please.
I would like to also echo Bob Simmons about Jackie. She did a great job, I'm very proud of her and the office, and it's been a joy to work with all of you and all of you men up there and women. And, uh, the city is in good hands, so I look forward to seeing good things come about from the council in the future. Thank you so very much for all of your, your kind kudos tonight, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further items on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Who, who got the first one? I, I didn't hear, seriously. Ray, okay. Alderman Coontz, second by Alderman Bertle. You know, you get older, you can't hear as well, okay?
Looking good for seventy-five, Mr. Mayor.
Any discussion, serious discussion, okay? All those in favor? Against? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned seven thirty-five P.M.